Board meeting, this meeting as they have been for a while is a virtual meeting via Zoom. It is being recorded as you probably just saw on the screen. All the votes that we take will be taken by roll call and we'll start off by doing a roll call attendance. So if the board could just introduce themselves.
Harry Tewesman present.
I am Buko present.
Catherine Harrison present. Okay, so we're all here. We will start our meeting as we always do with public input for items that are not on the agenda. We always take a few minutes at the beginning of each meeting to hear from anyone in the public who may have a comment or a concern. And if you do, I would ask that whoever might have a comment, put their name in the chat. And we are happy to hear your comments. Okay, I don't see anyone in the chat. I don't know if anyone else does. Nobody else? Okay. So we'll move on to our announcements, you know, since we're meeting every week, we don't have a ton of announcements from one week to the next. But there are a couple of important things that Tom's going to share with us tonight for announcements, if you wouldn't mind, Tom.
Thank you. Our annual town meeting is going to be conducted this year at the apologize maybe about pronouncing correctly, Buker School?
Got it.
Great, thank you. On Saturday, April 2nd at 1 o'clock. The backup date will be April 9th at 1 o'clock and generally when we're doing indoor town meeting, the backup date is generally if we don't reach a quorum.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
On to reports, Tom, have you got anything?
Thank you, absolutely. First, regarding never do announcements with a hot candy in the mouth. First announcement is our treasure collective vacancy. We're planning on doing us with the finance director and myself. Beginning the interview process with the candidates next week to hopefully get that position filled very shortly. It's a vital cog in the department and we hope to be doing that. Next, reviewing the cyber coverage application for Maya for insurance for coverage in case of cyber attacks regarding our IT system. Also, I know it was requested, but there's a resonance and concerns about Pleasant Pond not being totally cleared. Police Department went up there and made some alterations and changes up there and I hope to get up there this week to take a look and see how it happened. But thank you for Chief Denapoli and Sergeant for going up there and taking care of them. Next, I've asked our town council and basically this was back when I was here on the first tenure and I don't know if the board ever got any information on it. There was a major opioid settlement nationally and statewide and I knew back the last week I was here the first time as I asked councils how we coordinated that with the town. And so I just followed up with them again saying I haven't found seen anything in our records of our involvement in that. So if you could get back to me, that would be appreciated. Also prepping for March 15th for a Verizon cable renewal hearing with the board. And we'll be publishing the advertisement on that within the next week. For the compensation and salary study, I started contacting other firms. I know Ryan had at least contacted one firm and had a quotation. So we've started contacting other firms to at least say that we have contacted at least three firms before we make a decision on the consulting firm to do the study. The studies usually last between three or four months. So we're a small community. I would hope we would tend to go on the three month side. But I hope to get that beginning sometime in March. Also, what we have is a meeting with PPW Director, Mr. Sousa about a couple of programs as I stated earlier, there's money out there. Let's not turn it down. Let's look into it. There is a state culvert program from the Division of Fish and Games, we kind of replacement. Saw them, so Rich and I will be looking into that. We're also looking into the federal program, the Building a Better America program for infrastructures and there is literally over 25 to 30 items that you can apply for. So if you don't apply for it, you don't get it. So I think Rich is going to be very good at working with us on monetary items. And I believe that's it for now since we just did this a few days ago.
Seems like yesterday. If there are no questions for Tom, I just have a brief update, I guess, from in the chair's report, it has to do with communications. We've had a couple of types of communications that have come into the board in the last week or two. Certainly, we've received a lot of email input regarding the mask mandate that is in town that we currently have in town and that we will be discussing later on at this meeting. We've also, and you know, we did some research on that and tried to understand it better. Make sure we had as much up to date information as possible, which I hope we do. We also have received within the last four or five days, a number of emails expressing some concerns about of Human Rights Coalition and conflicts of interest. We don't have any data to support any of that information, don't know, but we do take all public comment seriously and concern seriously. So we will be looking into, I don't say looking into, we're trying to be, trying to understand the concerns that people have over the next week or so. And you know, anything that we find out that we don't, that is already public knowledge, we will, we will share with everyone. That's so that's all I have for the chairs report. Diane or Gary, do you have anything for the select board, anything?
I'll go first and then pass on to more on their business coming ahead.
Okay.
I don't have anything either.
Okay. Okay, next thing that we have on the agenda is a consent agenda, which has one set of minutes. We'll take a motion on that.
So I move to approve the Wyndham Select Board Meeting open session minutes from February 8th, 2022.
Second.
We'll take a vote. Diane?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Catherine, yes. So again, thank you, Catherine Tinsley unanimous for minutes approval. There's a bit of information missing on the next on this next motion. I, I think will be, I think I know what those Xs are supposed to be. But basically this is an appointment to the council on aging, someone who's expressed interest and it is to fill a term for someone who who left the board in the middle of their term. So I believe that this motion will end up saying by ending June 30th, 2022. I think it's a term just until, until June. So for comments or questions? If not.
I have, I have a comment. Do we do we know for sure who, who we're replacing and what that term date ends?
I don't know who we're replacing, but I do have an email that says that it is replacing someone who left midterm and that it was so this term, this position was just going to go until this, till June 30th.
As long as you're sure about, yeah.
I'm sure about the date. I, there were two, two open positions. We filled one month or so ago and this is the second one. I talked to Jim Reynolds and Jim has also spoken to Judy and it works out well for Judy. She serves on another board right now. So having this will be effective until June 30th. But yeah, I'm, I'm sure, pretty sure of the date. So June 30th, 2022. So there's nothing else. I think we're ready for a motion.
All right, move that the Wyndham Select Board appoint Judith Brubisky to the Council on Aging for a Term Effective Immediately and Ending June 30th, 2022.
Second.
Okay, if we're ready to take a vote, we'll start with Gary.
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Catherine, yes. So that's unanimous. The next item presently on our agenda also has to do with appointments. And I will just say that because we have, because of the announcement that I made earlier and the fact that we need to do a little research and understand and clarify for the community, this particular election worker job. I'm going to recommend that we postpone the, this appointment until our next meeting. We don't like to normally do that, but we do have some time. This is for the election in April. And once again, in this case, I do not know the ending date either. So we'll just remember this one and come back to it at our next meeting.
I would like to not do that.
Well, Trudy Reed, our town clerk on tonight, that she can explain the, the position.
I would, I would like to discuss it amongst ourselves before we bring anybody in if possible.
All right.
Go ahead.
So I don't want to postpone this for a variety of reasons. One, an election worker is an election worker and needs to be appointed as soon as possible. Their year only goes for one year. They need to be trained properly and have time to do that. I don't believe that the information that we got through email deserves us to postpone our work. I don't believe that it is all based on fact and I don't believe that we should allow that to stop us from doing our work. Which is to appoint election workers that our town clerk has recommended and therefore needs.
Gary, do you have anything you want to comment on? At this point, if not, I have one, just one thing and then we'll turn to Trudy.
No, I'm thinking, you know, these are very good candidates for the election job, but my only question was, you know, what was the selection process?
Well, that Trudy would have to answer. Again, my concern is that we've received a concern from a large number of community members, fairly large number for us. And I would just like some clarity and part of it is going to be, you know, hearing from Trudy about what this job is. But I would like to be able to say to the community, hey, we looked into your concern. We understand this. And this is, you know, this is what we need to do. And to your point Diane, this is an important position. We're going, positions that we're going to appoint them or not whenever. So this is not a matter of of any individual. But this is a group of people that was specifically called out in this email. I don't have all the information I, I wish I had in order to feel, I don't know, completely comfortable that, that I understand everything that was, you know, brought forward to us just in the last couple of days. So that's my concern.
In the last day, I do feel comfortable with it and I think we should hear from Trudy then, yeah.
Okay, it's not in the last day, actually. We've been getting emails for about four days, but it is, yeah, very last minute. So yes, Trudy.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you for joining us.
So I, I think one of the questions that I've heard just recently was the selection process of election workers. Normally there's a mask general law that we follow, but that's for a particular time of the year. So if we need any workers outside of that time period, as I did, I put something out on Facebook. There's something on our town's website looking for election workers. And these two individuals replied to one or the other of those post. So that's how this particular election process worked. These were the only two. These two would be a pool of election workers. They may or may not be, they may not be available to work every election and all elections this year. I like to have a pool to choose from since not everybody is available at every election. And election workers not to make light of the job, that's what they are, election workers. They check people in. They assist at the ballot box if it's, if it's needed when they're inserting their ballot. And they may help count the votes at the end of the night. That's it. That's their process. So I'm not sure if any, if anybody else in the select board has questions.
Questions? No.
So Trudy, no one in the election pool of workers has the ability to change anything or make any drastic changes to the election process as stated by mass general law, which is extremely specific, correct?
That is correct and
And you have a mix of, you have a mix of political parties in your pool of election workers?
That's correct. And Diane, as you, as you all know, anybody who oversees the election is either the warden or myself. Not the election workers.
And they also take an oath of office?
They take an oath in office and they go through training.
Right, thank you.
Well, I'm comfortable knowing that the position was advertised on the website. And as we've done over the past many meetings, calling for volunteers. So if we have two volunteers here and I read the emails as well and I understand people's concerns, but the fact is, you know, these two have volunteered, stepped forward and Trudy feels they're fully qualified. So I'm good.
Okay, well, I, I will just say I'm, I will be abstaining on this, not because I have any issue with what anybody just said, but because a fairly complex issue was just presented to us and I do not believe there's been enough. I understand all of issues enough and that there's been enough opportunity for us to get back to the public and you know, state our case. So I will leave you two to, to finish off this piece of business if you choose.
Well, one more question to Trudy, when's this date effective until?
It would be effective immediately and it would end at the end of June like all other annual appointments.
So essentially we're just appointing them for this upcoming election, right?
Yes.
Yes, right.
It's a busy, it is a busy election year. So that's why I put the call out. And I believe it's July, August timeframe, we would go through the process of reaching out to our town committee chairs as the mass general law calls for it to see if they have any people they wish to have considered to be put on the list for appointments.
Well, certainly as you spoke earlier, as Diane led you through, you know, this position is strictly administrative doing the, the work at the election time, checking off people and has nothing to do with policy and so forth. So I'm comfortable.
And, and let me also say that the local election, it's a nonpartisan election. And there's no, there's no parties involved on local election. So if anybody's concerned about political parties, that's nonsense because it's a nonpartisan election.
So I'll make the motion move that the Wyndham Select Board appoint Carrie Jelsma and Deborah Admazadie as election workers for a term effective immediately and ending 30 June, 2022.
Second, we'll take a Diane, that's okay Diane. Gary?
Yes.
Yes.
And Catherine will abstain. Actually Catherine will say no, because I'm not really abstaining. I just don't think this is the right time. So I'm going to vote against this at, at this time.
I don't want to say anything, but you're ruining our unanimous vote.
You know what, it's, I gotta do something exciting in my last couple of weeks here, don't I? It's been a tough year for unanimous votes. And I, I will, I will say that I do, in, in my time last, I do feel a strong commitment to respond to the folks that have had a concern and the response may be as simple as repeating or putting in writing what we just heard from our able clerk and past clerk. And some of the other things that are, that are being brought up, but I, I just, I just can't bring myself to just sort of ignore, ignore them the day after I got the emails. So we will move along.
Could I add one more comment?
Yeah.
There's still plenty of time. If anybody else out there is, is interested in becoming an election worker, please let me know. Feel free to volunteer. We'll go through the process of talking to you and getting your name up for an appointment.
Okay.
Thanks.
So we'll move, thank you, Trudy. We'll move on to a donation for the police department and Tom, I, I don't know if the chief is on, but Tom, would you like to perhaps introduce this and whoever might want to speak to it? Not muted. There we go.
Thanks. First of all, we'd like to thank Allsoft for pronouncing correctly, Design Incorporated of Hamilton for making a donation of $500 to provide for personal protective equipment and other appropriate purchases for our police department. As the board knows and our public knows, all donations of monetary or equipment items need to be approved by the select board.
Questions or comments on this donation?
Sounds great.
Yes, a big thanks out to Allsoft Design for this very generous donation to our police department. I know Chief Denapoli is quite pleased to receive it.
Okay. If there's no other conversation, I guess we're ready for motion.
Hey, move that the Wyndham Select Board accept a donation of $500 from Allsoft Design to quote, provide for PPE and other appropriate purchases to make the team safe and effective, close quotes for the Wyndham Police Department.
Second.
Okay, well, move to a vote, Gary?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Catherine, yes. And yes, and thank you to this organization for a very generous donation that I'm sure will be put to good use.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, chief. Next, we have some appointments. And Tom, again, I'll turn it to you.
Certainly, I think Chief Kavanaugh was on the line also.
I am.
Okay. Okay. Hi, chief.
Hello.
And if the chief would like to chime in to regarding the four appointments, I, it's my pleasure.
Sure, these four interns just completed a three month class that was taught by our deputy chief, Dan Sullivan. They met every Tuesday night for two hours, 6:30 to 8:30. They learn basically the basics, you know, putting your gear on, your air packs and hose advancement, small stuff like that. And so they've completed their program and it's time for them to move on. And we will then get, prepare them for the fire academy in November. And it looks like we have four good candidates, so.
Questions for the chief?
Chief, once we appoint them, what will be their job duties between now and attending the fire academy?
Basically learning the trucks, the equipment, anything to do with firefighting. We're gonna just keep pushing them along and teach them whatever we can. They will be an active member.
All right.
Chief, are any of these interns local by chance?
All Beverly.
All Beverly.
Yeah.
Pretty local.
Close.
Anything else? Okay, I guess we're ready for a motion.
Move that the Wyndham Select Board appoint intern Sean McCarron, Rico Lorenzano, James Kel Litry and Michael Burke to provisional call firefighter status pending successful completion of a firefighter physical and Cory checks.
Second.
Okay. And assuming there are no other comments on this, we'll take a vote, Diane?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Catherine, yes. And congratulations to these four interns who are now provisional firefighters.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We apparently, and maybe you can explain the difference to us, chief, our, our next item of business is one, one more appointment for firefighter. But it's a little different.
This gentleman lives on Lafayette Lane in Wyndham. Comes to us already certified as a firefighter one two and also an EMT advanced. So we are very lucky to have him getting on board if you vote him in. And all he will have to do is learn our policies, procedures, learn the trucks and the equipment and he's off to the races. We don't get too many of these occasions. So this is exciting for us.
That's great. Questions, comments? If not, it sounds like we're ready for a motion.
Hey, move that the Wyndham Select Board appoint Ronnie Scott Owens through professional provisional call firefighter status pending successful completion of a firefighter physical and Cory checks.
Second.
Okay, well, move to a vote, Gary?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Catherine, yes.
And very glad to have qualified people joining from amongst the Wyndham citizens.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Nice to have the, the group being filled out, replacing people and having a full team. Great, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. This item F is a little bit of a leftover from our last FinCom and Select Board meeting. And I'll just kick it off and it's for people to just throw out some ideas. So we know that we have about a million and a half dollars from the American Rescue something act, payment act, I think, that has come to us from the federal government that we can use, you know, so many different ways that it's a little bit mind boggling. But it has been suggested to us and we've had some conversation about the fact that perhaps there should be a plan, a comprehensive thoughtful plan to spend this money rather than just, you know, using it sort of like a checking account and just buying things here or there. So this is just a question or discussion, a preliminary discussion about how people feel about that and how the board thinks that we might come about putting together, you know, a general outline maybe of what types of things that get input from the town's department heads and others to find out what this, this ought to look like in a bigger picture way. So that's my introduction to that. Looking for just some discussion there. Gary, got anything?
Diane wants to go first?
Oh, sorry.
I, we were stalled. I thought, so we're talking about how we're gonna get all this information from our public and our employees, I, maybe like a couple hearings or public hearings, public gatherings on Zoom?
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's an element of it. I think we, we also sort of need to frame it. When I, when I look at other communities, somehow they have managed to put sort of categories of, of things that are high priority. So that's not 25 things, but you know, maybe five categories and then we can go about, yeah, any way people you think is reasonable to gather input, sure.
So how would you get the categories? Wouldn't you do the, the gathering of information from people and then make categories? I see you, Gary, sorry.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Gary, you haven't answered that?
Actually, yes. So I think the first step, I would refer everybody to the Massachusetts Municipal Association, MMA.org website where they have the treasury issues, flexibility for municipal use of ARPA funds briefing. So your choice there is the 437 page final rule from the federal government or a easier 44 page overview, which I think everyone really needs to take a look at first as as usual, the bureaucracy, this is a very complicated spending issue because there are categories that are off limits. There are some that require quite a bit of paperwork or narratives and others that are more of flexible and spending. So I think that if you read through that, that lays out the categories that we can spend the money in. That there is the the first one would be the PPE and expenses directly related by the town for COVID's PPE and expenses directly related by the town for COVID's response. I think a lot of that comes under the CARES Act already covered, so we'd have to go with with the finance director to see what's there. There's categories for revenue lost by the town. So the, as we've discussed before. And in town hall, there may be some revenues that we can make up that we lost from the iron rail. But there's uh caveats there as well. And then there goes beyond that, a long list of. What classes of people are or businesses or nonprofits are. Are eligible for this and what it can be spent on. But looking from a women's perspective, given the um. The amount of time that we would like to avoid on the paperwork and I'm thinking we're drifting towards. Uh, probably a major infrastructure. Project to uh take a good significant part of this and then take a look at some other categories. From people that really were impacted by the uh, the COVID pandemic. This, for the public, this has to be uh. Expenses on or after March of twenty twenty-one. We have to have the money allocated by the end of twenty twenty-four and expended by the end of twenty twenty-six. But it's pretty expansive. Uh, we can assist uh. Government expenses, nonprofit expenses, individuals such as those that lost loved ones. There might be uh some uh. Assistance there, but it's a quite a complex, if you remember, four hundred and thirty-seven page rule as to what can and cannot be done. So I think we need amongst the select board to. You know, become very proficient on what the categories and what can be spent with Tom and the staff's assistant. And then put together a plan as to what our real priorities and what would be available to us spend the money on in Wenham.
Sounds good. This is just, you know, the first conversation. Um. Tom will help, I think, get us a framework and and, um, you know, we can move from there.
So if we all read again, I skimmed it. But if we read it with a little bit more um. Attention on my part and maybe come back. A next meeting or the meeting after that with what we think we could go for and maybe. Maybe we all come back with the same ideas or we have bigger ideas and then. Is that a start that we could do?
Yeah, I think so.
And I, I think I would, I think that there are probably employees or, you know, department heads in terms of. Some of the major categories of infrastructure as as Gary mentioned that um. If Tom could gather some information or some thoughts from them as well, I think we'll be on our way to get it, you know. Between what we come up with and what Tom and the department heads come up with, we'll have a, you know, a start. Um, of the conversation that we can continue and put together over the next, you know, months.
So is that something we want to do in the, I don't remember, I don't know when our next meeting is, I'm guessing it's next week, but um. To work on right away or? I just need a time.
Well, it, as Gary said, we do have some time to spend the money and that out, very long out date of. I think two thousand twenty-five contemplates that we could actually spend this on some. Um, contractual agreements that might not be paid until out until twenty twenty-five. That being said, it's my own personal opinion that. Once we get all, once we get through the bulk of what we need to do for the uh town meeting, which is of course our priority right now. That we don't waste too much time um putting together, you know, a plan and it's a flexible plan because I think. There might be things that are. You know, and next that we contemplate that uh will change our mind about. But I, I feel like it's a summer project personally.
Okay.
One, you know, when we're not completely under the crush unless something. Critical comes up before that that we want to address in the in the short term. That's just my, my opinion of the time, the timing of that.
Well, certainly, this is going to consume quite a bit of staff time to uh, one, decide what the possibilities are. To determine what their cost would be and then to consolidate them. So I think uh. You know, it's something that we could need to track. Over the uh next few weeks and Tom can let us know as to uh. What uh workload this uh portends and what the staff can reasonably come back to us date-wise.
Yes, Tom.
Thank you, ma'am chair. Uh, just for the public who is watching us this evening, uh, just a reminder, and the board is aware of this also. Is that it only requires approval from the select board. For the projects. It does not require you to go to town meeting to appropriate it or to go to any other committee. It's in our particular cases, the three select board members who approve the final usage of the ARPA funds.
Right. So no need to wait for a town meeting or be gated by any uh that kind of thing. Okay. Anything else on this that we want to talk about? Okay. Um, just wanted to get that started so that.
So our, our action then is we're gonna come up with individual lists and meanwhile, Tom, the staff is gonna do uh some research and. Come up with ideas as well.
Yeah, I think, I guess I just want to emphasize that um this preliminary list. Uh, because you mentioned it, it ultimately will take a lot of staff time, um, Gary. I think these are just our. General thoughts at this point in time. I don't, I'm not, uh, I don't propose to ask the staff to, you know, get detailed information or look up, try to get quotes or anything. I think at this point we're at a little bit higher level. Um, does that sound right staff-wise? Work-wise, Tom?
Uh, yeah. Yeah, I think so. Yeah, we need to look at, you know, which categories really Wenham matches up against and um. And just get the general ideas as to where we're gonna put the emphasis.
Yeah, I think we're going to find based on the reading I've done and the listening I've done. That there are very many categories that we won't match up with. It's really gonna be uh, you know. What we think are priorities and I, I've said this before and and Jamie, our finance director, has nodded a lot and um. It's not exactly pertinent to this, but as we go through the process and we'll certainly be working through our, our TA. Um, but Jamie is going and up having to do all the paperwork for all of this. So we're, I think we talked about, once we. Get to the point of implementing some of these or even finding out whether they're actually eligible, that we were going to funnel everything through Jamie. So she has the conversations with. Uh, Powers and Sullivan, because they're the folks that are gonna do a preliminary audit to see if what we've come up with in general. Is applicable. They, they can do that without, they have the four hundred and seventy-seven pages memorized. Um, so just to keep that in mind that we're going to try to funnel it through through Jamie and she's happy to have that happen. Okay, anything more on that for now? We'll bring our ideas to our next meeting, which when our next meeting is, we'll talk about later. Um, if so, I think the next item on our agenda is possible articles for our warrant. And Tom, you've sent us some information and maybe you can take us through this.
And I believe Michelle will be putting up the listing, not the full warrants, but the listing of articles for the public to view.
Getting there.
Perfect. Thank you, Michelle.
Can you make it any bigger? Oh, perfect. Thank you.
Okay. Um. Today was technically today, the select board had posted for. Uh, posting warrant articles, not necessarily the signing of the warrant, but that will be the last date of the closure. What we have here is seventeen articles, including one petitioned article. This was just the order I put them in. Doesn't have to stay in this order. Uh, the select board is the final arbitrator of. Putting it in. As such, Article one is the annual operating budget. That's our appropriations. Uh, in the draft one I put together, I was using the number language from last year because we have not finalized. Our numbers, but from my understanding is we do have a balanced budget. We just have to put exactly where the specific numbers are going to be. Uh, played out. Article two is using free cash to balance the budget. Our finance director uh has stated that we will probably have our free cash number by the end of this week. Or the beginning of this week. Uh, and at that point, we can insert that into the warrant. Uh, Article three is use of free cash to fund the FY twenty-three capital program. Same thing, we have to determine how much free cash we'll have available to fund our capital improvement program. Also, a number of those items may be um eligible for ARPA funds going down the road. Uh, that the board could make a decision on in the upcoming months. Bills of a prior fiscal year. We know of one bill of a prior fiscal year that will have to be placed in the warrant. Uh, approximately about a couple thousand dollars to cover your cable council. Who did not submit the bill from the previous year uh for payment. I've also asked him to submit. His bills. Right now through fiscal year twenty-two, so we don't have a situation that we have to go back for those funds uh next year. Articles five and six, we got in the cemetery funds and routine articles that are on the warrant every year. Article seven is also a routine article for transferring uh water operating budget money to water capital reserve fund. Article eight is a routine article where we uh re- reach approval for the hundred, in our case, a hundred fifty thousand dollars. Of chapter ninety fund we received from the state. Uh, though we did receive good news late last week, we'll have to see how it. Moves through the legislature, but the governor has submitted a one-time addition. For Stora, not Stora, I'm sorry, previous job. Uh, for Swanscott. You have the same letter, so it's not that bad.
Yeah.
Um, for Swanscott, not Swanscott, third S Town, sorry. Gosh, I look at it for all challenges for my own interest, but Wenham would probably end up with seventy-five thousand dollars in additional. Roadway money and seventy-five thousand dollars for seasonal roadway work, if that's the same formula. So if everything works out right and we're not certain if uh. Those two items have to be appropriated yet, we could end up with three hundred thousand dollars in roadway work from the state. Uh, this year, which um, our public works department and our residents would find very grateful. Uh, Article nine is a CPA reservations and appropriations. I've contacted our CPA committee. Because I have not received what projects that they are actually going to be um submitting for yet. So I have a placeholder on the warrant and once we get that, hopefully within the next few days, I can plug that in. Article ten, uh revisions regarding the election procedure for the regional school agreement. Uh, I placed that on the warrant, but the questions I have for council is. Do I need more information regarding the article as an explanation? And also eventually the select board is gonna have to open up the agreement uh to go forth. Article eleven, which you're gonna have further discussion on this evening, is expansion of the select board from three to five members. I believe the board was fine with going from three to five members. The process that I have to know from the board. Is one, how we're gonna be handling the. Preliminary at the board, the town is gonna do, we doing an election after. Uh, town meeting, how that's gonna be handled and how we're gonna be doing the election of the. Um, additional two members, and I think we will be discussing that somewhat later this evening.
Can I, can I just jump in for one second, Tom? I believe you just said that the board, you said the board felt comfortable going from three to five members. But I believe the board was comfortable putting in an article, but not.
Okay, I apologize for the technical wording of that.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
The board was fine for putting the article on.
Yes, thank you.
Clarification, Diane. Um. Number.
Twelve.
Twelve, thank you, Gary. Uh, this is an article which I've seen in many communities. Uh, between the police chief will be setting time limits for soliciting or canvassing door-to-door uh in the town. Articles thirteen or fourteen came from town clerks. Uh, one will be exempting our residents, seventy years old, from paying. A dog license fee. Uh, that is a um. State law that we would be accepting. And Article fourteen is revising uh some of our dog licensing fees. Article fifteen would be extending the time limit uh for Maple Woods to. Uh, complete their project. That was actually approved at a previous town meeting. And to extend it, the town need to amend it at a town meeting. Uh, council is working on the language uh for the extension. Article sixteen uh is the citizen zoning petition which received the necessary months. Uh, certified signatures to create an overlay district in our community for mobile food vendors. And then Article seventeen, the final article, is the mandatory article for election of officers. Generally, this is the way I kind of set up the warrant. If the board wishes to move any articles around. Uh, it is perfectly a yard flip privilege. Generally try to keep the financial articles together. Uh, the bylaw articles together and any petitioned articles. Or articles to change previous votes in another category, but it's up to the board how they wish to. Um, make any changes to this if they desire.
So just from our procedural point of view, so that we're sort of all on the same page. Thank you for this, Tom. I think this is the first time at least I've seen. All of the articles in one place. It gives me a sense that we're moving forward and we kind of know what we're um dealing with and it seems like a reasonable. Uh, a reasonable size uh in terms of time commitment, uh annual town meeting. But just so to remind folks, so at our meeting on January eighteenth, this past January, we voted to open. The warrant on January eighteenth and we have voted to close it tonight. So. Um, since we don't have everything for all of these articles, I think that probably the um. Well, let's stand the the closing tonight, but as we get the wording of the articles um. And the ability to physically put them on the warrant, we also have the 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 ability to open the warrant. So probably at our next few meetings, we're going to vote to open the warrant, do what we need to do to put things in the warrant. Um, and then close it again and, you know, we may, we may do that a couple of times, but we all, we did have a a standing vote to do that. Um, I, I'm, folks may disagree, I think, oh, um, we do have to vote to put every single one of these, except we've already voted on one. But we do have to vote to put them individually onto the warrant and I think that, um, you know, the next. Couple of weeks, uh, or next week, we'll see, we should have enough of the actual wording of the warrants to. Understand whether we as a board um think that they're ready to be put on the warrant. So that's just procedural. Um, so if there are any other questions or comments for Tom, please. Yeah, Tom.
Yes, thank you, ma'am chair. One recommendation tonight is since we received the citizen's petition. By law with the correct number of certified signatures. Uh, the board needs to forward that to the planning board so they can properly schedule uh their hearings for that. So I would recommend this evening that you move to forward that article to the planning board because it will be on the warrant. And that would give them the time to do the hearing.
Okay. Uh, so Gary, would you like to make that motion and we'll at least have, we'll have that done?
Yes. So I move that the select board forward to the planning board, the citizen petition. Labeld zoning by law, mobile phone vendor overlay.
Second.
Um, everybody understand what we're doing with that? We'll get more information. Um, we'll vote, Gary?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Catherine, yes. So we have um that citizen's petition. Going over to the um planning board.
Um, do we have, is there a time that this must be completed by? I, for some reason, I thought we had to get it. Closed quickly so that, but I can't recall. I, for some reason, I thought we had to get it closed quickly so that, but I can't recall why, or if there is a deadline.
Yeah, it's got to get to the printer, and ideally, we were hoping to get to the printer on March fourth. But I'm going to secretly say in this public meeting that our absolute deadline to get it to the printer in order to have these back in time. Is sometime the week of March seventh, it could be closer to the end of that week. But that, I mean, that's literally, oh, my gosh, I hope they make it, I hope they get mailed in time, so.
To close it, we need to vote all the articles on and have our recommendations?
Not the recommendations, it'd be great if we did, but they're not required to close the warrant. There have been many years, fortunately or unfortunately, where we have taken a vote after the warrant has gone to print. And then provided to the attendees a piece of paper that says the FinCom and the. Plus the motions of the select board vote to recommend favorable or unfavorable action has been done later. So, and it says it will be presented at town meeting, so we don't have to have that for the printing, but we do have to have all of them. Written up, accepted, and you know, placed into a document that can be sent to the printer. And the printer will then actually mail them to all the residents.
So we can't vote this to be our warrant and close it and then work on all the details for the book next week or no?
It is closed, I mean, we, we're closed, it's closed, and we voted on the eighteenth to close it. So now we're just, in order to really put a vote on them, for me anyway, in order to vote on them, we need to open the warrant again. And and it'll be closed at the end of this meeting. So after this meeting, if we want to add more things, which clearly we're going to, we just will vote to open the warrant, add what we need to add.
So not add more articles, just more information to the articles?
Well, yes, I could, I think we could add more articles, but I'm not sure that I'm aware of any.
Is it, is it, is there a deadline when the citizens petitions are, can no longer be accepted?
That, if I understand this, and Tom, you can correct me if I'm wrong, or someone else, we've closed this warrant. So I think that it is closed to citizens petition, if we happen to have to open it again, and that I'm not. I'm not exactly sure, but I think closing this, the warrant, it's a little unusual this year. But we, we are closed to citizens petitions at this point, did I get that right, Tom?
Yes, generally, and Diane, you are correct. Right now, the board has technically closed the warrant. I have seen on occasion, rare occasion where they've opened it and closed it after they originally closed it. For an article that may have come up all of a sudden that they had to put on the warrant that they didn't have. But they don't usually open and close it again for a citizens petition, usually for the most part. When you close it, it stays that way, you work on the wording, you may do some clarification on some numbers. But for articles, the seventeen articles would be it.
Thank you, I was just, just wanted to get all my facts.
So Tom, do you think most of the final wording be ready for next Tuesday's meeting?
Yeah, the ones that were not requiring numbers. Were, as I'm looking at it, article ten, and that was clarification. On that article, if it needs more information for the wording. Article eleven, based on what the board does this evening. Of how we drafted, because the draft of it also includes the legislation. And so we have to discuss this evening, basically get an idea of how you want to handle the election process. Twelve, thirteen, and fourteen of five, fifteen, to get from county council, the actual extension language, it's probably going to be just. Three or four lines. Article sixteen, the wording is done, just have to put it into the warrant from the petition. The others are basically numbers.
And some of those, Tom, if I understood you. The regional school agreement, the language that we're going to hopefully be able to finalize the policy on the select board from three to five. And even the Maplewood's extension amendment are, are yet to be reviewed or are in review by KP. So I, I wouldn't promise that those are going to be ready by next Tuesday.
With what I can control, Madam Chair, it will be done.
That's, that's very optimistic of you. We do have a lot with, with, with numbers in them that, so yeah, so it's, you know, it's a, we'll have the discussion as we finish and see where we are. But it's a situation where we may have two or three next week that we could look at and put on the warrant. And then do the bulk of it the following week. Or honestly, if we, we don't have a lot of non ATM things for on agenda. We've caught up pretty well for right now, so if we would prefer to just put our heads down and. You know, put everything, have all the wording and put everything together, the following week, we can choose to do that. But I'm going to recommend that we wait until the end of the meeting and see how, how well we do with at least one other thing that we have to. It's directly related.
Another quick question, Tom also sent us like a draft of the warrant. Is that something that you wanted us to review, Tom, because I found a few little things that I could send back to you?
I wanted to, I'm sorry, I wanted to make sure you had something physically in front of you.
Okay.
Okay, if there's any individual comments that you have, please submit them to my attention, not as a group. Not as a group.
Right, okay.
That'll be fine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else on the, on the warrants for tonight? Okay, if not, go back to my other packet here. So the next item of business is, we've been sort of talking around a little bit tonight, we've just discussed the possible articles. And this item eight, summary and vote to establish policy direction for warrant article regarding moving from three to five select board members. Is a continuation of last week, just to remind ourselves and everyone else, we received an art. A memo from KP Law outlining the policy decisions that needed to be made in order to finalize. The language for this particular warrant article, and we talked through, well, we talked through all of them last week. But we had a short meeting, and we didn't really have time to maybe reflect as much as we wanted to or vote. So what I've done for this week is really just summarized. The direction that I think was the consensus from last week, and I can review what the issue was. And then these, these draft motions actually should align with the policy directions that are in the memo, which is also in your packet. Which has been in your packet for a couple of weeks. And if we can agree on, I think there are just these three. If we come to a consensus or we vote on these three, then I believe KP will have everything that they need in order to draft this article. So if I may, I'll just try to go through them and we'll see if my memory is the same as others, or if perhaps someone's changed their mind or wants to add or. Do something different, so the first policy issue that was brought up. The very first one was. How, how would the change, so, well, let me back up, so we've already put, we've already put the, agreed to put this warrant article on. So we know that we've agreed to allow the town meeting assembly to vote on this. And the first thing that the policy decision was, how would the change be implemented over time or all at once? Will the full committee be elected again, or will two new members be added? And I think we, that is addressed in letter A in the motion. Believe that we discussed that that implementation, the change to five would be by adding. Two new members at the appropriate election, not to reconstitute or. Elect again the full committee, so if that, if there's any comments, or if that's not what folks, if, is that what folks remember? We said that we were going to do, and if, does anyone want to change their mind or have any further comment on that first policy direction?
I think that's correct as to what we were looking at last week, that instead of reelecting. All five, that we would just add the two, knowing that one of the other three would be up for election as well, so it'd be an add of two.
Right.
Diane?
All of a sudden, I don't see Diane, my screen is not big enough. I know you're there, Diane, I think you're there, oh, oh, she's connecting. So Diane, whenever you can unmute. Bill Tyac, Diane.
Am I Bill Tyac again?
Yeah, you are, so is this your recollection? Is A, your recollection of how we decided last week that we were going to move by just adding two new members to the board rather than. Re-electing the entire board?
Yes, that is what I recollect, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's okay, so I think we all remember the same thing, and it doesn't appear as if anyone has any new thoughts on that. So I think we can take that motion. If you would, Gary, it should be draft motion A.
So move, move that the Wyndham Select Board implement a possible change to five select board members. By adding two new members at the appropriate election.
Second.
Okay, we ready to vote on that?
Yes.
Okay, Gary?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Catherine, yes, okay, so we'll have two new members added. The second issue was knowing that a third of the, of the board. Would have to be elected in any given election, we needed to decide. Whether we were voting for, let's see. If the names of the people who were running would appear on the ballot together, and they would be ranked voted, sort of who got the most votes. Or if such additional offices would appear on the ballot, one for a three-year, for instance, and one for a two-year term. And my recollection was that we had a consensus last week, or yes, that was last week. That in the election in which the two new members are voted, each name would appear on the ballot separately as follows. One for a three-year term and one for a two-year term, so people would each have an opportunity to literally win that. Portion of the election and would have to choose a term that they were taking out papers for. Gary and Diane, does that sound like the direction we wanted to go in?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, are we ready for a motion on that one? Yep, okay.
Right, move that the Wyndham Select Board, in the election in which the two new members are voted. Place each name appearing on the ballot separately as follows, one for a three-year term and one for a two-year term.
Second.
Okay, and. Ready for a vote, Gary?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Catherine, yes, so unanimous on, on that, so two separate names on a ballot. The last one was deciding essentially when to have the acceptance. We did, there was an earlier decision or question that we decided upon whether or not we would take this to a ballot vote. We didn't, we're not required to. It could just be a town meeting vote, but based on council's input and input. Even that the legislation, legislature would probably prefer a ballot, and it sounded, and, and we did as well. We've already made the decision that we will have a ballot election once, you know. If the article is accepted at town meeting, but we needed to decide when that election would be. And there were three options there, so accept, acceptance could be at one election, both. And the new positions would be elected at the next election. Or the timeframe could be shortened if the voter acceptance could occur at an election prior to the annual town election. A third option is that both the question, yes or no, do you want to move from three to five? And the candidates can appear on the same election ballot, so it would be the yes with the two names. And if yes prevails, then the two names are counted, and if no does not prevail, the two names are not counted. Or however, you know, however many, there could be many more, the candidates that would be counted or not. I don't think we were unanimous on this, but I put down what I thought may be the position that at least one member felt strongly about. And that was that following enactment, and this is true of all of them. Acceptance will be presented at one election and the new positions will be elected at the next election, that's the last motion that's on here. And I think that says that the voter acceptance would be in. Not this year, which is two thousand twenty-two, but at the annual election in two thousand twenty-three. And then the new positions, the actual people would be populating those, those two positions at the election in two thousand twenty-four. So I open that up for discussion to see if that's where everyone is, was, wants to be. Gary?
Yeah, so I think that's the way to go, as Diane said last time, I believe, that, you know, we. Needed to be methodical in implementing this, and also the reason I would want the election. For the actual members to be a year after the election for the act. Is that I would not want to have some people running for an office on a maybe, you know, you know. To run for an office that might not be there come election day, I don't think it's fair to the people. So I think as it's written here, we'll have a warrant on this town meeting. If it passes, and then if the legislature gets its job done in time, then we would have the acceptance at next town meeting. And the actual election for the new members of the board, the, the one after that, so I like the reading as it is now.
Diane?
I think I agree with that as well, I know it takes time, but it, it's a big change after so many years, three hundred seventy-five, really. That I think it needs that time to make that change.
Well, I guess we're going to have two votes tonight that are not going to be unanimous, because having followed this issue for. Since its inception, I think, and considering that the mandate there was initially. I think waiting three years, should this pass a town meeting, waiting three years to actually implement it. Is a necessary time, I hear. Well, it's two thousand. Twenty.
We have the warrant on this time, the next one will be the acceptance. And in two years would be the actual election of the officials.
So two years from the time that we, yes, so I don't, my opinion, I don't think that we need two years. I think there's been a lot of thought gone into this, I think it's going to be important for there to be some people. Definitely still around who, who were involved with this at this point, including members of the select board. And I feel confident that the legislator, legislature, this would give the legislature an entire year. To approve it, almost a year before it goes on, on the ballot. So my preference would be that we, we shorten this timeframe a little if, if it's been decided that, you know, we want to do it. That we shorten it, and, and people, yes, they, 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 it is a bit of an unknown. Because they could be going out for an election in which the voter acceptance doesn't occur. But it's really the exact same policy as a recall election. Someone wants to be a select board member, and there's been a potential or a call for a recall. That person's, the person who's being recalled is on the ballot at the same time as the number of people who would like to have that position. And they, they run or not run, they run their campaigns not knowing the outcome. On the recall, the recall, we see it seen, sometimes, oftentimes, the recalls are not passed, and so those people are not, those are not even counted. But my main priority really is if folks want this, and, and we gauge it at a ten, annual town meeting. Which is really all that we're required to do, that I think that we have time to do. that I think that we have time to do whatever due diligence that we, that we need. And I, I would just be in favor of shortening it to having the question and the candidates on the same ballot. But I respect everyone's opinion.
So could we not have, not have, what's the question I'm looking for?
Well, if I could jump in.
Yeah.
Diane, on the election, the problem I see is that whenever you have the election, if you do it right at the same time as the acceptance, you're gonna have one real election for one seat and then two maybes. Because one board member will be up and you're adding two. So you're gonna end up with a situation where there's one seat that's really gonna be there and two seats that maybe will be there. And I think that caused just too much trouble as candidates, you know, who's gonna run for the surest seat, who's gonna run for the maybe seat. I just think, you know, there's time to work through this. And two years, given that we've worked on this a year and a half already, that I'd like to go with it as written now.
So Diane, what were you going to say?
I was trying to think of a way to, to shorten it. And then the only way to do that in keeping with what Gary's saying and my original thought was to not have a vote for acceptance. But we would just be taking the town meeting vote and then at the next election, electing the two new members. That that would not be looked upon as, as positively by the legislature, right?
Right.
Nor by the residents. You're not really giving everybody the opportunity to vote in. I'm really kind of torn, because I understand that's a long amount of time to wait.
It is a long time. I, I I guess, I mean, there, I don't, I see these options that we've been given by council, and I see their comments that you know, the legislature, legislature may prefer. But I, I don't think either of those are an issue. I hear Gary's point of view that, you know, we have two maybes and one definite. But I I feel like there may be people who are willing to take that, take that risk. Because they feel strongly that they want there to be five. I mean, this, if it doesn't pass a town meeting, you know, obviously, all of this is moved. But I just think that can, that to wait until 2024 to have, to actually have, make that the change that we, we know people have wanted for you know, a majority of people have expressed interest in having for already a couple of years is, is you know, sort of a long time and unnecessary. But again, we'll just whenever, that's all I, I think we've voiced our opinions. Unless there's something new. Oh, I'm sorry, Tom. I can bear, I'm not really seeing you. Go ahead.
This may not help, this may not help at all in this decision.
Thanks.
I've seen it done in multiple, multiple ways. I have seen it done where he has gone to a town meeting vote and then a ballot and then eventually to two additional select board members. Some of the differences, when I've seen it go to a ballot vote, sometimes it's been because it's been a representative town meeting and then goes to a ballot vote for a townwide vote. Some, and some legislators like to see it go to a townwide vote. Technically, in Wenham, we have an open town meeting which anyone can go to and is considered your legislative body. If the legislators look at that as you're a legislative body, your townwide vote, if you wanted to vote yes or no, you could have gone to town meeting, very similar to an election. But this is basically gonna be all, I think, your preference of what the three board members, how they can handle that. But you can do that without the secondary vote. But if you want to go in that, in that manner, you have the option to do it.
Well, shall I make the motion and see how it goes?
I was just, I, I think Diane, I just have a question. So go ahead, Diane, because I just forgot my question.
My, my question was, tell me again why we can't have the acceptance vote at this year's town election?
We can. We just have to have wording, you know, the language for the, for the that, you know, the language for the ballot question.
Days?
Yeah, is it, I think it's March 4th. But yeah, that, someone brought that up, I think maybe even on the committee early on. That's probably you know, the, we could have, that would shorten it a year if we had the, just the ballot vote, do you want it, yes or no? At this year's election. And then at next year's election, we actually voted in, if the answer is yes, next year's election, we voted in the people.
So if it went to town meeting and it was accepted, and then we could get the, the wording right in time to, to Trudy. It would need to, it would need to win also at the ballot.
Correct.
But if it didn't get approved at town meeting, it would be null and void at the ballot.
Correct. And we, you know, I think as a town clerk, you, you have examples of where that's happened before. Because the ballot has to be, you know, so far in advance that we've not had a town meeting result, but we've had a ballot vote that, you know, valid question that didn't matter. So that's might be an interesting compromise. It gives, gives some time, but also shortens the time a little.
Shortens the time, but I think, if I can, it shortens the time, but it gives very little time for the, the population as a whole to get a warm grasp, grasp on this issue. Certainly, the other question is, how is the board gonna present this article at town meeting? Because, you know, as in other things, really, most of the people get their information on the articles as they're sitting there in town meeting. We have very little attendance typically at the warrant hearing. And then we'll, you know, have a, a vote that really represents a very small group of the population. So I still would like to leave it as is.
Well, as for town meeting, I guess I had an expectation that since this is a, a committee, this has been a committee that has worked on this, that was appointed by a select board, that the committee would actually be making the presentation of the results of, of their report. And you know, it's not dissimilar to a school override. It's a whole lot of information to understand before the election, before the town meeting. And then a week later, if there's an override, people have to vote, you know, how to spend that 400,000 million or whatever, are they comfortable with spending it? So yeah, there's, there's a communication aspect, but I think that we also have you know, an obligation. Regardless of when this election is, an obligation to very soon start communicating what this is and what it means. Because we, we know, you know, we have all the information about what it means. And we can, people, even at town meeting are going to have some questions and, but I, I hope that we can get some information out. And I guess I was expecting that the committee was going to make the report at town meeting, but if I, I'm certainly not going to be making the report.
I see, you know, the committee was appointed by the board and reported back to the board with a report. I think it's incumbent upon the select board to accept our responsibility to present this to the town. I mean, it's our article, not a committee's article. So.
But Gary, do we, I mean, who has more information? Who, who's the, who's, who feel, who, who do we think is the most knowledgeable in order to present the information? And this is not a lobbying effort by whoever presents it, especially.
But we know from the report that, you know, you had a very divided committee. So, you know, you're gonna have six or seven exact viewpoints if the committee presents it. And so I think, you know, it's amongst the three of us now to make our recommendations on the article and to present. So we're getting off track though, so.
Yeah, well, I, I, I just, there's a point though, and I think the chair of the committee is here and I'd like to hear him for a moment, but before that, I, I don't think we have six or seven viewpoints. I think we have a report, at least the way I read it, that has a majority point of view, that actually they took a vote. And so they're they know what they want to recommend, and they, for whatever reason, are going to have a majority and minority opinion. But it's not, they, they have done the work that we asked them to do. We may not agree with their recommendation, and we have a right to do that, but that, I will be disappointed if the entire committee sort of stands at the microphone. Can't stop this free speech, right? But it will be disappointing if the entire three to five committee stands at the microphone in line and each one, we've seen this happen, gives their own opinion of what they think the report should say. And the report is the report. But if, I'm, I'll recognize Patrick. I, I see you have your hand raised and.
Madam Chair, can we, let's, can we go back and make the motion first and get a vote on the, the sequence of the election?
I don't mean to be, you know, difficult here, but I think as before, we, we got opinions from folks. Patrick's opinion may change my mind. So I think I'd like to hear it before.
Well, I think we need to have both the majority and minority spoken to here as well. You know, that's, that's the problem. We need to accept the responsibility to present our ideas, having heard both the majority and minority reports.
Okay, but that, I don't know if I agree with that, but that doesn't really have anything to do with what I think Patrick is. We're just talking about a process here. You know, when do we want to go to the actual election that we said, you know, we probably will have, I guess we're still talking about that. So I, you know, as part of the discussion, as we often do, we have our discussion and then we frame our motion based on the discussion. And I, I'd like to hear from the chair of the three to five committee, hopefully with, with process, a process comment, Patrick. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, so it was the committee's intent that we would present this at town meeting. As chair, I would, I would present the both sides and welcome. I was in the majority, but also welcome a minority member to, to present as well. And the select board does have a chance to submit their recommendation. It'll be right on the warrant, what, what the recommendation is. As far as the timing goes, I think the select board, the former select board, Gary, you as chair, really slowed this process down and probably cost us a year. So, and but in saying so, I go back to a November 19th, 2019 meeting where you allowed the vice chair to opine for 10 minutes on how this committee was going to be formed and what it was going to be. And it was going to be two committees, the Pat Waddell Committee and the anti-Pat Waddell Committee, as you remember. And you never, you never spoke against that to, to see what it should be. After that, now, we had our
Madam Chair.
We had our, we had a meeting in October.
Madam Chair, can we, I mean, this is getting to be a critique of past selectment processes.
Well, I'm talking about, we were talking about a timeline here. So the timeline's already been pushed back by the select board, the prior select board. So I, I do think if we can get a a vote on the, on the 2022 ballot, that would be fantastic. An ATM, an ATM vote and then to a ballot. And if, if ATM says no, then the ballot vote becomes moot, which we've seen recently. Where a vote didn't matter on the ballot. So that, that's the way, I believe, that's what I would like to see. The, we were also, the committee was also kind of hamstrung by our charge. Our charge was already now. There's been some questions that have been raised that we talked about, but we, we're not comfortable putting in the report because our charge was so narrow. We were only to opine on whether we believe three or five was better for the town of Wenham. We knew there were other issues. We knew that the election structure would be an issue. We knew the timing of the vote, should it go to a ballot vote. Now, ballot vote is not necessary. And KP says that in their memo, it is not necessary. And inside that memo, it also says that the select board can amend based on the, the legislature's requests. So if the legislature said, you know, we really want to see a ballot vote, that can always be added later. But we've already had one overwhelming vote at town meeting that expressed interest in studying this. We're going to have another vote at town meeting. If it's just as overwhelming saying yes, do you really think the legislature is gonna push for a ballot vote as well? Or they'll, they'll listen to their constituents and say, they voted twice on this. And, and if the, the second vote is as overwhelming as the first, I don't think the legislature is gonna say we need one more time. So I, I think there is some, some flexibility here. And if we're gonna, I would, I would say, you know, get it done sooner rather than later. Don't stop pushing it off another year.
Thank you, Patrick. We'll, we'll close it at that. I think we heard that the chair of, of the committee that's been charged with studying this would like to see it done as quickly as possible. I obviously agree with the concept for a different reason. The past is the past and future is the future. And, you know, but it's, I think to get back on track here, we'd better take a minute to talk about the fact, ask ourselves and to revalidate the fact, do we want as a select board an election, a ballot verification of the town meeting vote? I just want to make sure that everyone's clear and agrees, or a majority agree on that before we even decide you know, and anything further. So Gary, are you in favor of having an election? Or just a town meeting or what?
Yes, as we voted before, I think we need to have broad consensus before we change the, the government like this. And we can get more people out for the election than we typically do at the town meetings.
Okay, and Diane, how do you feel about that?
I also agree. I believe we need to have a ballot verif- ballot vote to confirm the town meeting vote.
So we're, I, I agree. And so we're just to be, so that no one's confused. So we're, we're all agreeing that we do want to have a ballot vote. And the question before us is when, you know, when to have the election. And if you'd like to make the motion, Gary, feel free and we'll just vote on it and see where it goes.
All right. So move that the Wenham Select Board will require an election to decide whether to accept the increase in the number of select board members. Following enactment, acceptance will be presented at one election and the new positions will be elected at the next election.
Okay, so we're voting, this motion would presume that there's going to be two, an election one year and then for acceptance, and then the following year, the positions would be elected. I remember what my question was. I'll, I'll, I'll ask it after we vote, but if you give, if you will bear with me, I just have to write this down, because it's an important question on a few things. Okay. So the motion is before us, it's been seconded. I don't think we have to ask Gary, but we will. How would you like to vote on this, Gary, on this motion?
Yes.
And Diane?
Yes, but there's no time on this.
Well,
Motion.
That's true. And I think we probably could add a time. We probably should amend that to say, so this is the following, acceptance will be presented at an election in 2023, am I that right? And the new positions will be elected at the election of, the annual election of 2024. Is that, do I have those dates right?
Yeah, I'll second that amendment then.
Okay, so.
For clarification purposes?
Yes.
Approve the town meeting 2022. You're looking at an election in 2023? If there are possible reason that you have a special election further down in 2023, would you be put, would you be make changing, instead, would you be saying approve the town meeting at 2022? And brought to the voters at the next available election versus the general election? Just putting that out for food for thought.
Well, that's, can I re, remake the motion here?
Sure.
Move that the Wenham Select Board will require an election to decide whether to accept the increase in the number of select board members. Following enactment by the legislature, acceptance will be presented Following enactment by the legislature, acceptance will be presented at the next town election, and the new positions will be elected at the following election. Does that clarify it?
Tom, does that clarify that?
Well, it's clarification. This is basically up to the board. How, what I'm just giving you is, if there is, and I don't see anything on the horizon, but if there is a special election further down in two thousand twenty-three, you could put it on that and have the two thousand twenty-four. No, I'm sorry, two thousand twenty-two, now all the years I've met. Two thousand twenty-two, if you have a special election for some particular reason between May and the next annual town election, is that if you put it on that, and then in two thousand twenty-three, you could have the open seats.
Well, I think that's what I put forward does that. Because following legislation enactment, acceptance will be presented at the next election. So it could be special or regular. And then the next election after that, whether special or regular, would be where we elect the folks. So it could well be a shorter timeframe if the special election is in there. But, you know, I don't think we want to lock it into a particular year because you're not quite sure what the legislature is going to do.
Right, and I think you added a word in your comment right now, Gary, that clarified your second amended motion a little bit more. I think at the end, you had, you said, we'll be elected at the next election after that. So the first time, it wasn't clear to me that there were two, you know? So presented, acceptance will be presented at one election, and the new position will be elected at the next election. I don't know if it's after that one.
All right.
Or the subsequent.
Sounds good. Does Catherine Tinsley have that?
Catherine Tinsley?
Yes.
All right.
Okay.
So question on that, so we're not voting until after the legisla- legislators, till it goes to the legislature, is that correct?
Yes.
Based on this, based on this motion?
Well, that's what the warrant says, but that was one of my questions. Because in one, KP opines in one place that this is going to be election after an enactment. But in another place, it says during the legislative process, sort of before they decide, they may, they may say to us that we're required to have an election. So I don't want to leave an, an open question here, but I think I need some clarification from KP on that. Because when I think about it, it's worded two different ways. A lot of it is sixty-four days after enactment. And I've seen that in a couple of places. But then, and I'm looking, but I'm not seeing it right away. They say something about that it, that the, the court may require an election, which sounds as if they would require it before they completed their legislation. Tom, do you have any, you know, information? Have you been through this before? I wish I could find what that says, that.
Generally, if the legislator, if you do town meeting, it all depends on how you put the language together in the legislation. If you're putting the words "election" in there, for all intensive purposes, you're locking yourself in to the next election. If you don't put it in, the legislature may ask you to eventually put it back into that. But that's up to the legislators. You know, the fact like I said earlier was the fact that we have an open town meeting. Technically, that's considered your legislative body, even a representative town meeting. But some legislators may not consider, and I've dealt with ITMs and OTMs my entire career. Some legislators do not consider an ITM a representative of the community, though technically it is. It would ask for a ballot question. While an OTM, in some cases, is considered the same as an election, except you have to sit through a town meeting to take your vote, instead of just showing up at the ballot box.
So I, I sort of think that that's why we didn't talk about having the ballot in two thousand twenty-two. Because I think it said following enactment. And there was those sixty-five days, not the thirty-five days to get on the ballot. So I feel as if it's tempting to want to put it on two thousand twenty-two. But for some reason, I don't think that we can, and I think we should check.
Yeah, I found the, the paragraph, you know, how many times have we read this? But it says such an act, this is from Laura Goldberg at KP, "Such an act may, but need not," as we know, "include a voter acceptance provision. If no such provision is included, there are two possibilities. One, a motion may be made at town meeting to add a voter approval provision. Or two, the general court may request that such provision be added." So that's where I had the sense that, you know, it, there, it doesn't talk about sixty-five, sixty-four days after enactment or anything. It just says, "The general court may request that." And it sounded like they would request it during their process. So I guess we do need, I, I feel like we, we need clarification on just that one point. But again, you, I think Diane, you agree with that?
I do, I do. I'm sorry, I know that we want to vote. And I, I, we're all very strong about having a ballot vote because we all understand that a hundred and twenty people, or even if we get two hundred and fifty people, that's not even really five percent of our population voting. So that's why you, we have always preferred a ballot vote. When that happens, I think it's just wonky a little bit. We're not, it just, there's a reason we, I didn't bring it up to put it on this ballot in two thousand twenty-two. So if we can, I'd like to know, and then we can go forward with the vote.
Okay.
So I don't mean to slow down the.
No, I think we've, we've got, done so much work on this, I think we ought to get it right. And I don't think also, I'm not sure the, the answer to this question isn't going to, may change people's minds. So we, we should know it and be sure we know what we're voting for. And it's, hopefully, Tom, not a, a long, not something that will take very long. It's, the simple question is, is it possible to approve this or vote on this at our annual town meeting now? And if approved, have ballot question, which has been put in in advance on the election, the same year, so the twenty-two annual election? Does that seem like a question that you think you can get, knowing the powers that you have, Tom? That you can?
So let me make sure if I understand all three of you right now. Is that if we could do a vote at the annual town meeting, which I think we've all agreed upon to put it on, on the warrant, is if we can put the question on the May annual election ballot?
April.
April, I'm sorry. I'm still thinking about last, you're, April.
Yeah, specifically April seventh, if you want to be specific, the April seventh town election.
I can ask that, but I'm going to ask one other question of you. Because I've never done this on that type of question, but this has come up on a dead exclusion vote. The Chair had earlier said, if it dies at town meeting, it technically dies at the ballot anyway. I know a dead exclusion question, that's not necessarily the case. Because a dead exclusion, if it fails a town meeting, this is a long shot. I have to go through all the options with you. And dead exclusion case, if it fails a town meeting, you already have a scheduled election. And for whatever reason, it passes at the election, you can actually have either a citizen's petition to call for a special town meeting to bring that question back to the voters.
Okay, that sounds like another question to.
I've, I've, I've had that, I've gone through that once in my career. So that I have to check with the coun- with council.
Yeah, I think that's worthwhile checking with council, too.
Do it. Not certain, you can do it for a language question.
Right, so if you could ask that as well, that would be great. The other question I have, and I don't know if this is a question for council, maybe it is. As with all of, of everything that comes before town meeting, the town meeting, the folks who attend town meeting have the ability to suggest amendments to all of our, all of our motions. I don't know about this kind of a, I've never having been in this kind of a vote, voting situation before. My question is, I guess, we, we've made these policy decisions, and, and the committee has written this report. Nobody's going to change data, obviously. But is the, does the town meeting have the authority to amend on the floor? And issues or items that are in this warrant article? Is my question for, for my third question for council.
Generally, Madam Chair, and I've worked with KP Law for a fair number of my years. The general position has been, it's up to the moderator to a certain degree to what he, he or she accepts as an amendment. Generally, the rule of thumb is if it's within the four corners of the article, they may agree to it. In this particular case, I'll give you an example where they may not agree to it. Let's say somebody made a motion to change to a seven-member vote. That may not, the moderator may not agree with it because that's not within the context of the article. Depending upon how the article is finally drafted, if it's saying, okay, at the next election in two thousand twenty-three, the moderator might accept the motion to the next town election. It just.
Right. Right.
It depends, but I can, but council will give me the options on that. But the determination is always the moderator. And sometimes the moderator will look at council and say, do you agree that this is within the four corners?
Okay, I, totally unrelated, but I am assuming, and it's somewhat related, that we have council lined up to be in attendance at this annual town meeting.
Oh, absolutely. And in fact, in fact, under the new, new plan, under the new plan that I assume was the same one that I presented to the board my first tenure here, you're not paying for that. It's part of the retain.
Okay, that was just, so, so it sounds like we have A and B all set and C on this. We're going to get answers to three questions, and then we're going to have a final vote. And I, I think that KP can write much, well, they've already written most of the warrant, and I think you have as well, Tom. So I think we have most of the information we need.
They, yeah, they had written it, Madam Chair, and part of it, we left off on the warrant, and you clarified it this evening, was how you were going to add the two members. Because they originally written it as basically a group vote, where the top one gets the three, the two, the one. You clarify, each seat is going to be an individual seat.
Right, right. Okay, we have one more item on our agenda tonight. And I'm going to, I just want to make a big note that we have to return to this so that we, not that we're likely to forget it, but, but we do need, or at least we've committed to having either a further discussion slash and/or vote on a mask mandate. And part of the reason we didn't vote at the last meeting was that we had some open questions, which I think Tom at least has an answer to one of them. I have an answer to one of them that Tom may have also. So the three questions, I think, were questions on how our own staff feels about the mask mandate. Also questions on, a, a, a question on what the school district was doing, which I think we have, we have now based on just watching the meeting. But I think, Tom, you, and there was a third question. Well, I think we were continuing to look at data. But yeah, so, Tom, I think, I think you have done some research on a couple of those already. Is that true?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Regarding Town Hall, I asked each individual employee what their feelings were. And it was unanimously that they were fine with removing the mask mandate in Town Hall. And that was not from a group email, that was from individual meetings with each member.
Okay, and if I'm correct, and what I read and heard from the school committee, they're actually have not, they've talked about the mask policy. But they will not be voting on the final mask mandate for dates until after the kids get back from school vacation, which I believe is next week. So we will not have the benefit of a school vote if we want to, you know, vote on this tonight, which, you know, not required. Just it was another piece of data that we were asking for. I think the state has said February twenty-eighth, and then left it up to, they call it mask optional, I guess, at this point. But they left the decision, as they have done to individual towns, to individual school districts. So the district is, is, is putting it off a little. So with those two things, do we have thoughts on masks? From the board?
Gary, you want to go first?
Yeah, I think the, the main concern from last week was the, the opinions of the staff in Town Hall. So if they're comfortable, I think we can move forward with one of these options.
Okay.
I, I am, I am fine with, comfortable with option one. I can tell you that I will still wear my mask just about everywhere, but, and allow people to do the same. But option one is fine with me.
Okay. I, where, I guess the, the piece of information that I didn't have, I suffer from the, the, being a scientist, was I wasn't really seeing up-to-date data. You know, clearly, things were going down, but they weren't very completely down. And so I was, that was information that I was interested in. But both the, the Wenham website has been updated with information through February seventeenth relative to cases and, you know, percent positivity. And very kindly, a gentleman from the administration of Gordon sent me, sent us, maybe, information, which is on actually Gordon's website, about their numbers. So, so we have now data through February fourteenth slash seventeenth. And indeed, the numbers are, have continued to go down and are now, at least for me, more comfortably below where they were, you know, last, last year, or last October. I was very interested to see that, not just that the numbers were going down, but that they were going to go, continue to go down and go down far enough that they were actually lower than they had been. And that, that seems to be the case. And I don't read many of these chats because it's almost impossible to read them. But I see one from Gordon Imming at the, at Gordon, who says, "Last week, our Gordon campus completed the fourth week of COVID-nineteen surveillance testing for the spring semester. The staff at our on-campus testing center processed nine hundred and eighty-six PCR tests, of which one came back positive, giving our campus a positivity rate of point one percent, which continues to be much lower than national and state averages." So now we have up-to-date data as well. And so I, I'm, I'm, I don't know what the schools will do, and I don't know what our kids will do when they're, you know, home versus in school. That's up, I guess, up to the schools. But I'm, I, I'm comfortable with, at this point now. I, I, I'm comfortable with removing the mask mandate. I do think we should make this effective. Just give us a couple of days to make sure that we get the information out to all the people who we got, that we gave the mask mandate to initially. Because there were more people on the list than I thought. And I've already had several questions about have we made the, you know, the change yet? So I guess, if, what I'm hearing is that we are looking at option one, remove the mask mandate in all public places, including municipal buildings, effective. And just. effective, and just because I'm going to, today is the twenty-second, um, I, I, I think maybe the twenty-fifth, just to give uh, our staff enough time to write up something that's speaks to the fact that there will no longer be, that it will be mask optional. I think we need a little help from the Board of Health to what the, the new language would be, to be consistent with all the other places that have, um, removed their mandate. So I'm going to suggest that it be effective at the end of this, of this week, but if someone would like a different date. I think we're, I think we've settled on option three, right, except for, no. I didn't, didn't mean to say option one. Oh, my gosh, wait. Option one, um, except for an effective date. So that's the twenty-fourth or twenty-fifth.
I don't know how many people we have to notify. I, I don't, I don't really have the information on that, but you know, if we do it effective immediately, people will know as they know. I mean, it seems like it's easier to take the mandate off than putting it on, that they need more time. So. But I don't really have the, I don't really have the time that it would take or the numbers of how many people we have to notify.
Well, I, I think, I think, well, Gary knows this because he delivered some of those flyers. I think we had between eighteen and twenty sort of businesses and other kinds of public places that we notified when we put the mask mandate in public places in place. Is that about the right number?
Yes, I think so. But those were, uh, hand-delivered to some of the addresses, but I think as a practical effect, you know, whether we do it immediately or the twenty-fifth doesn't matter because, um, I, I should think we just do it immediately because, you know, two days or three days, some will get the word, some won't, but in this case, the default is they're better protected, so there's no risk if someone has a mask on for one day extra. So why not just do it now?
Okay, so I'm with that, except for if someone, um, so we need to publicly, we need to at least put this on the website immediately because the, it's the other direction that I'm concerned about. Someone who, you know, isn't wearing a mask or is told that they need to put a mask on because there's a mask mandate, and someone says, "Well, no, there isn't," and someone says, "Well, I didn't read that." Well, what do you mean? That's, that's the issue that I, the communication issue that I'm concerned about. So, you know, if we think we're comfortable, and it'll get to people just putting it on our website, um, or if we think we want to, you know, do that, of course. And then also, um, uh, you know, contact by email. I think the people that we can, we don't have any more flyers, just emails. Uh, that was, that was where, where my concern was. And I, I actually don't, I really don't know what the, the exact wording should be. Um, I think it's important to note that people, even though we may have removed the mask mandate, that, you know, obviously, individuals and businesses, I believe, are still free to individually have their own mask mandate separate from ours, right? So I just think there needs to be a little thought around the wording so that we don't create any confusion.
Tom has his hand up, but I think there's always confusion, no matter how much time we have people.
Well, I think that's true, but a, a, as I've said before, we always have forums and nobody shows up. And what we, what we say at that time is, "Well, we did everything we could, and if they didn't show up, you know, whatever." So, Tom, I'm sorry. Go ahead. You know, your hand up.
Uh, one is, um, another way we'll, we'll put it out for informational purposes is do just a code red call to the residents if you feel that would be getting a greater number just to say the mask mandate has been lifted effective for night.
What do you think about that, guys?
I, I don't particularly like that. It's not really an emergency. It doesn't seem like a code red to me.
Those aren't popular in town, unfortunately, unfortunately. Gary, do, do you have an opinion, Gary?
Well, too, I'll just make the motion. Let's see, move on. So, uh, I move that, uh, we remove the mask mandate in all public places, including municipal buildings, effective twenty-five, February twenty-twenty-two.
Okay.
Second.
And I would just ask that, um, in, in, when we put that in public, in writing, that we just be sure to, um, of, you know, get some input from the, doesn't have to be in the motion, just a, a request to Tom to make sure that we have some input from the, um, Board of Health so that we get the wording clear. But other than that, I have no further-
Madam Chair, input from where?
From the Board of Health. So if we, if, yeah, just call, just, just to touch in with Dr. Cheng to say, okay, we're removing this mask mandate. What, you know, have you, what kind of wording do you think it should be? Um, and he will probably look at some Mother Town and tell you what that is. And if he doesn't have an opinion, that's what I would suggest too, that we just find the language, um, somewhere else so that people understand that, that businesses in particular still have their authority. Okay, so that, we have a motion, and do we have a second?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Uh, and a request for Tom on, on that. Um, so we can vote. All in favor? Gary?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Catherine? Yes. Thank you for that. Um, so I have other matters. I don't have any other matters, but we do have on the, the slide upcoming meeting dates. Um, frankly, I, I, I anticipated we would need these three, we would need a, a meeting every week because I anticipated that we would have all of the numbers that we need to fill in, you know, ten of the seventeen articles. Um, so we don't have that, and we don't have everything back from KP. But honestly, if you folks want to meet on the first, I am happy to schedule a meeting and put together an agenda for the first. There will likely be one on the eighth, whether there's one on the first or not, um, because by then, we'll, you know, have to have everything absolutely set. So Gary, do you wish to do a few things on the first, and, or do you want to just put it all together on?
I'm available either way, but I just think, you know, do we have time, and will everything be finalized if we have just the sole meeting on the eighth? Because I'd hate to get to the eighth and still have a typo or a question or something else on the article. Whereas on the first, I think we can get a lot of work done if Diane's available, and you're available, Catherine, that we could get the bulk of the articles done on the first, and then ask any questions on the first so that we're sure on the eighth that we're wrapping it up.
So you're talking about actually the language in the articles, because the articles won't be done, because we won't have the numbers. But the language themselves, if there's any, you know, comments that we have on the language, we can do that. Okay, I'm, like I said, I have all those three dates open. I just don't want to, I want to make sure people feel it's time well spent. So, Tom, I, I did ask you earlier, I know that you're available on the first of March. Um, and I just want to confirm that you think, well, you've already presented a fair amount of words, language, um, that will be consistent. So you okay with us just taking a look? Does that make sense to you as well?
That's fine.
You think it, okay. Um, I don't think, it, it's my impression that we will not have it, we're not likely to have any new numbers, but that doesn't change the fact that, to Gary's point, there's things that we could talk about. Okay, so we will meet next-
So I am available March first.
Oh, sorry. Did we, oh, oh, you're, oh, you're coming too?
Yeah, but I have a question, though. You keep saying the numbers. Isn't the FinCom kind of set with those numbers at last meeting? It seemed like things were pretty much set. Did I misunderstand?
I'm gonna let you, I'm gonna let you answer that.
Okay.
Because I don't want to speak for the FinCom or the Finance Director.
I'm not going to speak for Mr. Purdy of the FinCom either, but, um, it, it appears that our budget is balanced. What is, um, the question is primarily the capital budget, uh, is how much of the free cash we utilize in the capital budget? How much of the free cash we're going to utilize to balance our budget? Right now, um, we are in good shape right now without the free cash. The issue is how much of that we're going to be utilizing though. So our revenues are generally matching up with our expenses right now, and not expecting to see any real changes in our expense items.
Okay, just some big number or some numbers that are missing at this point that are integral to finishing it up.
Right.
Is that a fair statement?
It's not at the point, we're in a position where we have to, uh, reduce our FY twenty-three budget by half a million dollars. That-
Well, thank goodness for that.
Yes. Don't mean to put the, um, the Armageddon, uh, signature on that, but that part is, is done. The point is how much of the, in most cases, how much of the revenues are we going to be utilizing in those particular cases?
If I may.
Uh, oh, Mr. Purdy?
I'm sorry, I'm on my tablet, and I can't see my face to show.
Oh, you're trying to hide your face. We understand.
Thank you, Tom. I concur. Um, right now, we are not projecting the use of free cash to balance the budget and operations. The question is, uh, use of free cash for approximately five hundred and twenty-nine thousand for one-time capital expenses, and how the remainder of free cash will be, uh, used, uh, as possibly a reserve account. The other side of this, of course, is we have to certify the free cash, and I know, uh, Jamie Cologne is working on that along with yourself, Tom, and we hope to have that number by as soon as possible so that we can move forward on this, uh, this whole piece.
Okay, so that's-
Thank you.
So we're not, thank you, Jim. So we're not quite there with the numbers, but we do have quite a bit of other, um, other stuff done so that we-
Yep. The operational pieces, as Tom mentioned, I think are in, we're, we're, we have a good consensus, if you will, on, on the operations, so it's-
Okay. Okay, s- and of course, you know, that all has to be put in the right format for the warrant book and all of that stuff, um, which we would like to see before we actually, uh, approve it. So we're going to meet next week, Monday, the first, um, and likely Monday, or not Monday, oh my gosh, Tuesday, the first, Tuesday, the first, and Tuesday, the eighth. I don't know why I have problems with that. Um, we'll have agenda items for both of those meetings, and, and really by the eighth, we're, we, we do have to be completely done um, with, with the warrant. Okay, is there anything else? We have some leftovers from this week. I've made note of them. Um, going to get together with Tom, put together an agenda for next week. Anything else anyone wants to discuss? If not, you know, that-
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
At, at, I don't know what time it is, eight thirty-two?
Eight thirty-two. Yeah, okay. Uh, Gary, a second to that. We'll take a vote. Gary?
Yes.
Gary's anxious. He didn't even let me call his name. Diane?
Yes.
Catherine, yes. So we are adjourned at eight thirty-two. Thank you, everyone, for your participation. We'll be in touch.